Got a. I was doing my other Willy Ned duties here, scheduling and got so wrapped up in the fun of it. I forgot what time it was. But but thank you. Yeah, cool. Thanks for hitting record. Yeah, we got um yeah, we're 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 running this one. We usually run you guys on um. Thirteen oh two because sometimes it. Works out that there's like a, you know, there's a town meeting of of some kind on the other channel, but this one we've got. No other meetings, so we're actually get you guys on both. Thirteen thirteen oh three means that they can watch on the website and online and stuff too. So it's like, yeah. Anyways.
Thanks, Jack.
Anyways, yeah, thanks for hitting the cord and uh. Yeah, have a good one.
Thank you. Everything okay, Joe?
Yeah, I I was just exploring some areas of Zoom and. There are new features.
Oh.
Fun, like. My birthday here.
Your birthday?
Zoom has become like another room in my house effectively, like when something shows up, I'm like, whoa, great. Christina, during at at the start of the meeting, did you want to continue to use the Google form for people to sign up? Or did you want to? Handle it directly?
That's a good question. How would we do that?
What I I I know what had been discussed briefly internally before was to. Keep on pasting it into the chat as. People appear and and with some kind of text that says if you'd like to give public comment, please. Click here, but I I don't what what there are only two people within that right now, and so I. I don't feel like there's such volume at the moment that. That is warranted, but I I was just volunteering because you're going to be busy. I would happily. Keep on pasting something in if that would be helpful.
Okay, so the only problem, I guess, is that I disabled the track.
Oh. So may maybe you should just you 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 know, the two people who signed up.
Yeah.
Prior to the meeting and everybody else, you can just suggest they raise their hand.
Okay. All right. Hi Curtis.
Hello.
Hey Christina, Ursula is here too.
Oh, hi Ursula. Sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay, just making sure.
Hi Jose.
Everyone.
Are you there, Steve?
Yes, I'm gonna have to switch to my phone at one point and then I'll switch back to the. Uh iPad.
Okay. I think we're just waiting for Jake. And then we can get going. Get started.
I am here, Christina. Sorry.
Perfect. No worries. Okay, I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. This is our public hearing FY twenty four budget. It is Thursday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty three, six oh one P M, and we are meeting remotely via Zoom. Um if everyone could please um. Say their name and say they're here on the committee. That would be fantastic.
Bo in here.
Conry here.
Constantine here.
Elfenbein here.
Green here.
Malloy here.
We lost Steve. Did anyone hear Steve? Steve, are you there? Okay, we'll catch up with Steve. He's here in spirit. Okay, at Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment. That encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation. Resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Okay, and with that, I. Over to Jake and Joe for our public budget presentation.
Okay, I think Joe's gonna do the uh. Run the uh the slideshow and we'll get through this and um. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. Members of the school committee, thank you for yet another meeting and and for some of you, the the. A a another night this week and to all the folks that that live in the towns that were honored to serve your children. Um just interested community members, thank you so much for being here tonight to weigh in on what you're about to see. Um I'm gonna go through five or six slides that are just gonna highlight some some. High altitude things that are going on in the district. And then Joe will be jumping in to to fill in sort of the the. The the quantitative portion of of the presentation tonight. So Joe, if we want to go ahead. Um you know, we we as educators, as professionals dedicated to serving. Children, serving families, serving communities and serving the people who in schools and classrooms serve all of those people. Um we believe that our classrooms and the people who gather in them are. The central piece of our school district. Um that's where the most vital work happens in the school district. Therefore, we believe that keeping as much money as possible as we possibly can to students. Is the only appropriate way to operate. It's it's a sound. Uh fiscal procedure in terms of return on investment for people out in the community that pay the bills. It's also really ethically and morally the only acceptable way to operate. Um we fully realize there are people. In in by way of employees and practices and work that we need to do. That we will continue to do the work as best we can, but there are some things that we need and some people that we need. That we can't afford right now. That doesn't mean that those are crossed off of a list somewhere. Um it means that we wait. It means it's not now. Doesn't mean that we have forgotten or that our course or beliefs or approach has changed. Joe, we can go on to the next one. Um. You know, it's. This is having. Done this now eighteen times as a district leader that that last slide and you don't need to go back, Joe. This is. Um. Lots of people could look at a a year in the life of school administration, district administration and think, oh, that's something I would not want to be on the hook for. Um. After this this weird and snowy winter we've had, one might think that that occasionally that's the worst part or the hardest part of this job. The actual hardest part. Is having to make decisions that deeply impact people's lives in in terms of finance. I I know if we all had our way. Um we would have every penny and more that we need to do everything that we want to do. And so I thank everybody for their feedback and their input from our school councils to our parents, to our students, to people in the community. For for giving us all of the things to weigh. Um. That we have to make these these sometimes agonizing decisions over and um. I hope that everybody appreciates that's watching or that thinks about this, that these are indeed agonizing. Uh decisions on the part of everybody that actually has to make them. Um I do want to do just a quick overview of our enrollment in very real time because these numbers are different than the last time that we looked at our enrollments. Uh which was in January based on October one numbers. Um the district right now is sitting at at over twelve hundred students. Um that's more than sixty students than we had last year. Every single one of our individual schools is actually up by um a a number of students. And these numbers are actually even up from where they were on that October one report, which is which is what the state considers kind of final and permanent. Up until the March report, which we are in the midst of uh of of getting submitted to them. So you can see compared to years gone, you know, our our enrollments. Took the um the the plunge that a lot of. Public schools and and maybe independent schools too, I don't know, took during the the heart of the pandemic. Um we seem to be bouncing back. The Berkshire Regional Planning Commission had. A couple of years ago suggested that the Mount Greylock Regional School District would be at just really above a thousand students for the twenty two twenty three school year. Um and we're we're um. You know, well above that that projected number and we're very grateful for all of those students and the families that trust us with their students. Um these higher numbers are driving some chapter seventy increase that we are going to see for fiscal twenty four, chapter seventy for anybody that doesn't know that may be watching is. The mechanism through which the state actually funds its portion of public school education. Very sensitive to the number of students that a district and a school serves. Very sensitive to the types of students in terms of student demographic that um schools serve. And that's the slide we're going to look at next is breaking down those demographics a little bit. So you can see this this um particular slide is organized going back really over the lifespan of the regional school district. All three of our schools, of course, have existed for a long, long time. The regional school district began its existence um or as far as Desi is concerned, data wise. In the eighteen nineteen school year. You can see that our percentages of multilingual learners went up from point five to two point three percent of our student body this year, multilingual learners. Um students with individualized education plans um who are served by our special ed department. Um that that number will come and that number will go. That's pretty constant to the eighteen nineteen school year, just as things would would work out this year. Um these bottom two rows are high need students and high need students are um. A conglomeration of perhaps multilingual learners, perhaps low income students or students who who you know are are. Um have some sort of economic challenge in their life. Uh or or students who are who are on individualized education plans, I E Ps, or in some cases. Combination of two or three of those things. Um those numbers are up to I I would I would say if I were forecasting this by. Um the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, it seems pretty clear that we'll be at about forty percent of our students would be considered high needs. Um up from under thirty percent in eighteen nineteen and our low income students has seen a similar. Um although maybe even a little less of a gradual growth, um although fairly constant from last year to this year in terms of the district. Um. At twenty six point six percent of our students are considered by the Commonwealth. Uh by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed to be low income students. We're gonna look at these just on a school by school basis in the next three slides, Joe, if we can move on to the next one. Um looking at Lanesboro Elementary School, I'm not gonna go through all of these. You can see them and and. You can, you know, take a look at this later if you'd like to. The data source is outlined here uh in the link to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. You can see at Lanesboro this school year. On nearly four percent of the students that attend Lanesboro Elementary School are multilingual learners. So when you hear somewhat shockingly in some cases that we had to add staff, had to figure out a way to add staff. Um in the midst of this current school year. Um that is one of the 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 numbers that is driving the adding staff and it was not optional. It it was really required because. Um there is there are data sources that really um. Even if ethically, we didn't feel the need to provide that that staff member, which we did. Um our data sources would indicate that it was not something that would be nice to do. It was something that per Desi. Under whose auspices we operate were actually required to do. Uh students on I E Ps at Lanesboro, just under twenty percent, high need students approaching fifty five percent. Low income students at Lanesboro Elementary School um approaching forty five percent. We can move on and look at Wes and the next slide, Williamstown Elementary School, three percent of the school. Uh of the students that attend at Wes are multilingual learners. Um these are students that are. Um many times adjusting to a new culture, adjusting to a new place, likely adjusting to a new um just a a new physical climate. Um accountable for MCAS and all of the learning that every child's doing. Um as well as working on um acquiring English skills. Uh even as they share their culture and their language with uh with the rest of us and with their colleague students. Our students on I E Ps is a little bit down uh at Wes compared to years gone by. High need students is approaching thirty percent. It's right at an even twenty nine and our low income students are just a a tick lower um. Than twenty one, twenty two at at still nearly twenty two percent. You know, really getting pretty close to one in four of our students at Wes. Um are considered by the Commonwealth and and identified by the Commonwealth as one thing that could be used to describe those students is that they are from a low income home. Um as as we transition uh over to Mount Greylock. Uh you can see the one point one percent of those students are multilingual learners, nearly sixteen percent of our students at Mount Greylock are students on uh on I E Ps. Um a full third of our students, nearly a full third are high need students. Remember, that's some combination of either a multilingual learner on an I E P or low income. Or a combination of two or three of those and uh twenty two point eight percent um of those students are considered low income. And Joe, we can go on to the next slide. The the reason we talk about that. Is um the reason we even, you know, spend five or ten minutes talking about those demographics is is to be. Illustrating that really nothing that we do. Stand still. Um our expenses don't stand still. Um more importantly, our students' needs don't stand still. Pertinent to this slide, neither neither do the needs that society. America right now in twenty twenty three overlays on us as the responsibility of the public school system. Um so we are responding to all of our our, you know. Changes in demographics as is evidenced by the previous three slides. We're also changing or or working to be responsive to changing society. I think anybody on this this Zoom uh meeting. Who's a parent understands how your child's early adolescent or pre-adolescent, early adolescent adolescent and getting ready to go off to what's next life. Is very different, very likely than even your own. Um with the influence of social media and with with lots of other things. So we see this societal change all around us. We work hard to respond to that. We also work hard to respond to the the specific needs that each of our member, regional member communities brings to us. Um and we work to be, you know, day in, day out for a hundred and eighty days at a time and then. Uh the rest of the year in planning and and catch up. We work to be responsive to the unique needs of our individual students. You know, we have a student body. But that student body is comprised of twelve hundred people with with different talents, different fears, different concerns, different needs, different strengths. Um and we work to meet them where they are academically, socially, emotionally, developmentally. Behaviorally, we work to meet them where they are so that they can get um. Be facilitated to get to where they want to be when they hit the point in their life where what's next is now upon them. We work to do so in efficient and cost effective ways. Um we don't operate in a vacuum. As as a school district. Even though we are in some ways a separate governmental um entity as a regional school district. We are primarily funded through the towns of Williamstown and Lanesboro. And we understand that they also have needs that they must um keep in mind. And services that they must deliver to people that are not part of the school community. Um and and we. Wh- whether we 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 like it or not, the simple reality is. We are part of what they do. We are not entirely what they do, although I would venture to say in both communities. We're we're well over fifty percent of their financial effort as they um do their work of collecting taxes. And and translating those tax dollars into public services. Joe, we can go on to the next slide. Clearly, our enrollments, you could see um are defying expectations, which is a good thing. Um we we need to have robust numbers in order to be a robust school district. Um but clearly, our numbers of very specialized needs are growing as well. Um we're moving to a higher level of nuance in our students in some cases and and definitely a higher level of need. When we talk about needs that students um. Come in the door with and that we're obligated to be accountable for. Um are the needs within needs. This is. You know, when I say that, I'm talking about very, very specialized programming. To me, not only academic needs, but in some cases, physical needs and health needs. In other cases, um behavioral needs. You know, talking about programs that that we could invest in running in-house if we have the time and if or or the the space. And we can find the the right people with the right certifications and the right experience to do that work. Very often, we're talking about students that live here, their neighbors, their friends. But because of need, they they go to school in in another place. Um and often that place is accompanied by a tuition that is two or three or four times our general per pupil expenditure rate. And oftentimes, um those needs are met. Through transportation from Williamstown or from Lanesboro to where that more appropriate, more helpful uh school and placement are. Which again um can exceed our um regular uh run of the mill per pupil expenditures. We can be talking about sixty, eighty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars plus. Um to to meet those needs within larger needs for some of our students. That is an impact in this year's budget preparations. It's an impact in the current fiscal year that we're working to live through. Our growing enrollments are increasing needs and level of needs that we that we must address in order to appropriately serve these communities. And the ever increasing cost of doing business and and you can think about your. There's some places where considering a school budget through the way budgets work at home is appropriate and there's some places where that's just not appropriate. Um this is a case where you can think about your own expenditures at home. And I suspect that if we did a poll, there'd be very few people talking about. The number of things that that feel like they've gone down in cost over the last year, over the last eighteen months. Um we're experiencing that at at an institutional level with everything from the upkeep of our physical plant, the three schools. Um to the heating, to to keeping the lights on, to making sure students have the materials that they need to learn. Um and then our our, you know, really all important human resources, the the our colleagues that come here every day to do the work of of. Serving our young people. Um those costs are are always on the move up as well. Um so we're we're really experiencing every single line item we have wants to grow. And uh and it is a challenge to figure out how how to allow those to grow in a way that is um. Not only doable for the upcoming fiscal year, but that is sustainable over five years and ten years and fifteen and twenty years. Um this requires communications. We've had a lot of communication and back and forth with the families that we serve over this year's budget. It requires partnerships. It requires relationships with uh the folks that do this work in the towns that are accountable for making the towns finances work. And uh we will continue to 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 grow and nurture all of those relationships because we're going to need to, as I don't think any of us. Um could honestly say we have a a super sunny outlook at this point for fiscal twenty five or fiscal twenty six. And maybe we'll all be pleasantly surprised. That's not been um my experience in my nearly two decades of doing this work. Um Joe, we can go on to the next slide. Um just some some key financial points that you're going to see as as I wrap up my portion and ask Joe Bergeron, our school business official, to step in. Um cost increases across the board, really almost in every single line item. Um we we absolutely um know when we're making a budget plan. That it is that it is a plan. It's it's. It's a it's a map at best, but it's certainly not a map that's etched in stone. Um unexpected mid-year increases in staffing and transportation and out of district tuition driven by student need. Are a major factor. In our working to get through fiscal twenty three in a way that we um. Can close our books without going into the red as we as we start thinking about closing down fiscal twenty three on June thirty. Of uh twenty twenty three. Um our sources of funding are shifting. Um our chapter seventy, the state program for funding our schools is up. Our grants, uh the COVID grant money is is uh. This is really, you know, we're working through the last of that. Most of our investments have been around student mental health and wellness. Uh in by by way of people. And we don't see those needs going away and therefore we can't see those individual people that we brought in new to serve them going away either. Um. You will see a shift. You you'll see a shift from spending down choice and tuition monies, which is one of our income sources to spending down. Uh E and D, which Joe will get into uh much more deeply. And um you can see, you will see as we again look at finishing off uh fiscal twenty three. That we have some of our revolving accounts and some of our other accounts, if you if you opened up our books right now, are sitting in the negative. And we will be coming to the school committee, making shifts from um other accounts, including tuition and E and D excess and deficiency. To to backfill um those places where we have overspent. Um just due to the need to do so. And all of this is while trying to get as close to a three percent increase as possible. Um so. Understanding the context that the rest of this presentation will be in, I will um I thank you for for patiently listening to me. And uh we'll we'll hand this uh to Joe. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. So um what you're looking at here is is page one. Of of the budget. It's a it's a familiar sheet that shows. Up at the top. Um our top line, our gross operating expenditures per building and then district wide. Um district wide going in FY twenty four, we're currently projecting to be up four point six percent. Um that is driven not by expansion of of people or things or projects, uh but simply by the growth. That is being begged out of the district in terms of. Um trying to keep as much in place up to date and ready to go as we can. Uh then as you continue from the. Top line down. You see this next area, which these are all of the different ways that we offset. Our total budget so that it doesn't go. our total budget so that it doesn't go completely to our member towns. Importantly, we have a tuition revolving account where in FY twenty-four, we're looking at probably putting about seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, somewhere in between those two numbers into the account via tuition and students from our tuitioning in towns of Hancock and New Ashford primarily. Within school choice, we're projecting for FY twenty-four to bring in four hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, spending here five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of that account. Williams College Fund, annual gift that that Williams has been providing for many years. That is seeing a decline as we move from this year into next year, projected as the college is is cutting into all of its department budgets in a similar percentage fashion as as they are here. Within grants, as as Jake alluded to, next line down where you're seeing six hundred and fifty thousand dollars total in projected spending. A large or the the entirety of the difference between the plan for FY twenty-three and the plan for FY twenty-four comprises COVID-era grants going away and us transitioning to our normal run rate of federal entitlement grants and and state grants. The three hundred thousand dollars in circuit breaker down a bit because last year we were seeing less student need that would trigger circuit breaker reimbursement. So those are the reimbursements that we're receiving this year. This year, we're hopeful that next year that revenue will will rebound a bit, but but there are no guarantees. We we cannot budget to go out of where we think that account might stand throughout the year. And so that three hundred thousand dollars is a representation of what we think we can do based on the funds coming in as reimbursements or as available for use next year. Chapter seventy-eight, that's our our shining light right now. The the governor's budget, which came out just a couple of weeks ago, demonstrated the single largest increase for us and for many school districts across the Commonwealth in terms of the degree to which the state is stepping in and more fully funding public education in Massachusetts. Part of that is tied to our increase in in enrollment. Part of it is tied to the Student Opportunity Act and the funding that is coming from the federal government down through the state government, state governments in that regard. And part is is our state government showing more of a commitment to understanding the cost pictures that that we are all operating within as costs are rising as we keep on saying across the board. Chapter seventy-one, transportation aid is also projected to increase. Part of that is due to our transportation costs increasing. Chapter seventy-one is a form of reimbursement for prior year costs. But it also is being funded a higher percentage than in recent years within the governor's budget as far as percentage of our transportation costs that are being reimbursed in that chapter seventy-one aid form. Charter tuition reimbursement that fluctuates with our charter out enrollment and with charter tuition rates across the state. That funding is staying relatively similar, up by a few thousand dollars. Medicaid reimbursement, this is a projection based on as we submit for reimbursement from Medicaid program for various services that we need to offer within one year. We are currently looking at probably higher Medicaid reimbursements next year than we're receiving this year, which is why we are budgeting that at an additional nine thousand dollars for next year. Regional transportation revolving, we had talked about this at the school committee level last Thursday. But I think it's healthy for our context tonight to think of that hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one and the line below it are excess and deficiency use at three hundred and fifty thousand. Think of those as a combined spending down of funds that had been saved, associated with excess and deficiency, excesses within the general fund that we as a district had planned to, we as a district plan to build up our excess and deficiency account over the years, over the last few years, because this June, so in just a few months, we are going out for our final borrowing for the Mount Grand Regional School Building Project, which was completed a few years ago. And one of the components that lenders look at as they are determining the the interest rate that they are going to offer within their bids on that borrowing, one of the components is how healthy your excess and deficiency account stands at that point in time relative to the cap that exists. It's a five percent cap on your on your operating budget for the prior year. We met the goal of maximizing our E and D. And with next year being after that point in time where maximizing it has value beyond being fiscally strong for our own good. We are recommending that we spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that E and D account along with the one sixty-five, seven seventy-one from the regional transportation revolving. That is taking the place of spending that had been higher out of the tuition and choice accounts. So those three are really, when we talk about our major revolving accounts, tuition, choice, and E and D would be would be those three accounts that that we are referencing. So in sum, we are offsetting the amount that we need to bring to our member towns until we get down to the formulas that calculate the net operating assessments. So all of those sources of revenue and revolving accounts that we just talked about are offsetting what we need to end up bringing to our towns. We strive to hit a goal of only three percent as an increase to to the member towns, despite the fact that our operating increase was four point six percent. That's how we got down to these numbers, the three percent increase in Lanesboro, the three point one six percent increase for the town of Williamstown. This is something that we showed in draft forum to the Williamstown Finance Committee last night. And next Monday night, we are expected with the Lanesboro Finance Committee and Select Board to give them a presentation of what could be final numbers by then or draft if if for some reason, things are not voted tonight. So that's the top and bottom line that we're looking at. Now I'll dive into more of the detail of what creates that four point six percent increase that we are looking at. Are there any school committee questions just at this high level right now? We'll have plenty more time tonight later, but. Carrie and then Julia?
I have a question about the enrollment. So if we're up by sixty students from last year and we don't see the reimbursement for those additional sixty students until not FY twenty-four, but FY twenty-five, right? Because it's based on, so we're going to have a gap in terms, even though our chapter seventy money is up, we're still missing sixty students there, reimbursement for sixty students or state aid, I should say, for sixty students. Do we have any recourse for those kinds of population jumps?
It does do a second go-round of data collection in March, Carrie, and and works to equalize what they can, but but it but it really will show up in the, you know, like fiscal twenty-five
Right.
with what you're, but but it it does impact your running average.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Julia?
Thank you. My hand was tentative because I'm not really sure this is a question for right now, or if it could even be answered tonight or discussed tonight, but I just wanted to flag it. And that is, there are, I absolutely appreciate your description of the shift to from preserving all the funds in the E and D account to now being able to spend those down. I'm wondering what the strategy or kind of decision criteria are for how much money stays in those accounts? Like, how does, you know, I I know there is a strategy and a decision set of decision criteria, and I suspect this is discussed in Finance Committee, but I would just be interested in hearing more about, you know, how that love, how the level of those accounts is determined.
I I think it would be healthy to return to that perhaps later as we're talking about whether or not these are the right amounts to spend down as we move into next year. So let's let's revisit that. Were there any other questions on this page from the school committee right now? Hearing none. Over the last few years, we've broken down cost increases by non-payroll and payroll. Payroll is where I personally much prefer to spend as much of our money a- as I can. Putting money towards the human beings who interact with our with our students is the greatest investment that we can make under almost all circumstances. That said, these numbers that you see that summarize numerous lines within the non-staff budget that's embedded with or that's a part of your packet stand out as costs that we cannot avoid, that that we cannot trade for for the humans that that we know, love, and and perhaps want to want to bring into our fold with us going forward. So three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase on health insurance, a significant chunk of that is triggered by the premium increases that Berkshire Health Group has needed to vote over the last two years. This year, we had a reprieve in terms of our actual costs because there was a premium holiday built in, a one-month premium holiday built into the eight percent increase that was put into effect for FY twenty-three. An eight percent increase and a one-twelfth savings net meant that we were not impacted this year by the by the result of that increase. But we are for this coming year for FY twenty-four. On top of that eight percent increase, there was an additional one percent for FY twenty-four, so we're looking at a nine percent effective increase between between this year and next year for every premium that we pay a portion of. In addition to that, we have seen a couple of trends within the district that we think are going to stick around. One is that during open enrollment periods, we've had a higher percentage of employees moving into our insurance from other insurance than we ever have before, and people that we have hired into the district have taken our health insurance at a higher rate than we had seen before. The compound effect of all of those things means that we are looking at a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase for offering health insurance to our employees for FY twenty-four. Hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in out-of-district tuition costs. This is caused by two things. One is that we have a larger number of of students who are going to be within out-of-district tuition placements for this coming year than we had in FY twenty-two, but that really came mid-year in FY twenty-three. The other part is that the state, while it gives with an increase in chapter seventy, it it also is taking away a little bit in that it governs the tuition rates that that certain schools within the Commonwealth that offer tuition-in programs to students can, it governs the tuition rates that they can set. They allowed a fourteen percent increase between this year and next year. Many schools driven by their own cost structures and needs are taking advantage of that fourteen percent increase opportunity. So we're seeing an increase in the cost per student as well for students who are already within out-of-district placements. Transportation cost increases, a portion of that is due to natural increases within our transportation contract. But another side of that is as out-of-district tuitions increase, transportation costs associated with those out-of-district tuitions materialize and create added transportation costs as well. Eighty-five thousand dollars to Berkshire County Retirement. Berkshire County Retirement System is the municipal retirement system that serves many of our employees within the school district. They annually issue assessments to each member of the Berkshire County Retirement System for us funding the continuing retirement payments to retirees within the system. Eighty-five thousand dollars is the increase that we're seeing between this year and next year. That's triggered by a few different things. One is natural increase in in costs and and funds required. Another side of it is that the way the assessments are calculated, they're looking at five-year averages of of the of our payroll to the future retirees. That calculation has two things embedded within it that are creating this eighty-five thousand dollar increase for us. Part one is we have been a district with the elementary school staff within our, within our realm since the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Prior to that, those those staff members were employees of our two member towns. We've had some costs that have been shifted from member town over to us. This is realizing and and finishing that. That's a small portion of that eighty-five thousand dollar increase. A larger chunk is that during COVID, many municipalities and 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 places that were that were not our school district were temporarily laying off employees. And so their payrolls for those for that year, year and a half were in many cases down while ours was either level or up in in every regard. So we are taking on a larger share of the overall Berkshire County Retirement Assessment as a result, along with many other school districts within within Berkshire County. Seventy-five thousand dollar increase in maintenance and renewal of buildings and our technology infrastructure. These are components within our buildings that need to be upgraded in order for us to continue operating in the capacity that we are. They they range from cybersecurity-related things to pumps and components within our HVAC systems. So this seventy-five thousand dollar increase is is another one that we cannot easily avoid. So it's it's embedded here. And then forty-three thousand dollars for supplies. That's all of the basic consumables that we have across the district. Our textbooks, the consumables associated with curriculum. Costs are increasing everywhere in pretty significant percentages for all of that. This does not represent some kind of a a shift in using fancier supplies or or a new curriculum, changing curriculum. This is this is keeping the status quo, but keeping it up to date and running as we need it to. So that's the non-payroll side. Are there any? The the and and again, I'm sorry if some of this is repetitive. I I know that we've gone through this type of slide, I think, a couple of times over the last month, month and a half, but I wanted to make sure to touch upon everything that's driving what we're seeing here. So that for anybody who's here for the first time, they've got it. All right, now staff. Payroll and benefits. Benefits were something that we just talked about, but when you take payroll and benefits combined, they comprise eighty percent of our costs. So as payroll, which is sixty-something percent of our our overall budget, when payroll increases by some number of percent, you you can gradually do the math on on how that can drive our budget one way or another as well. A large portion of our payroll is driven by union contracts. We have three in total. One with teachers, one with paraprofessionals and custodians, and one with cafeteria workers. All three are in negotiation right now for next year and the two years following that. So we work under three-year contracts typically. This is a contract negotiation year so that we are negotiating the contract that will be for FY twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. We have a wonderful partnership with our unions right now. We have focused over the last few months on trying to figure out how within what we do and within what we're able to do financially to make sure that the employees who are most impacted right now by cost increases. So the employees who who are making the smallest amounts in in total across the district are are going to receive the most benefit out of out of these contract negotiations. That's been a a truth That's been a, a truth and something that people have worked diligently towards on both, on both sides of the negotiating table. And it's been great. We, we don't have final details to offer yet, but the budget that we have here tonight represents where we think. Those negotiations are headed and where we hope we will come to an agreement in great stead over the course of the next two months or so. Prior to the start of, of the next year. So we're, we're in many ways ahead of where school districts and we have often been in terms of completing negotiations ahead of. A new contract year. So part two of that. All of that sounded good. That slide, I think the, the next one, the part two side is that. We are looking at a seven hundred and nine thousand dollar increase. Within our three school buildings in terms of the total increase for payroll costs. A significant chunk of that are our. Existing staff salaries. A portion of that is a projected increase in what we need to do to, to plan ahead for substitute staffing for the coming year. It's an area that we at the School Committee level have talked about a number of times over the last few months that we've been surprised this year. By the unprecedented need for substitute staffing. And part of that is driven by planned longer-term leaves. That we did not know about in March of last year. A part of it is driven by a, a more significant bump in short-term staff being out. As we pull out of COVID, but, but perhaps experience every, every element that. That can come to us in, in the real world back. So collectively, that's a seven hundred and ninety thousand dollar or seven hundred and nine thousand dollar increase within our three school buildings. And then within the District Office, we're looking at a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar decrease. In what we are putting forward within the budget that you see here tonight. And we, I'll dive into this more in a second, but we are decreasing the number of staff in each of our buildings despite the fact. That our budget is increasing by the amount that you're seeing here tonight. The majority of that decrease will happen from natural attrition retirements, planned departures, moves to, to other parts of the, of the country or world. Moving on to other, other forms of education and, and other job opportunities. But. This would be a good moment to, for a second, early this afternoon, so that we could get it out in writing and, and it could feel coherent and, and not as though I was giving a staccato set of bullet points. We did share a textual description of the staffing changes that we're looking at for FY twenty-four. I am going to read a bit from that. But it is in both the School Committee Packet as well as. The packet that's available to the public on the website. If you look at the agenda and materials for this meeting. So right now it's March thirtieth. This is when we need to get a budget approved, but it's also quite early in the process. Of planning for the exact schedules and exact needs that we will be accommodating. As we look into FY twenty-four. So that's a long-winded way of saying we need to get numbers out. But we don't know exactly what the best course of action will be as we enter the school year in September, and we're going to try to explain that. In enough detail so that, so that everybody knows what they are reviewing within this budget and what it means for our, for our students and for our staff. At Lanesboro Elementary School, we're planning on reducing by one teacher. And, and we're trying to do so in a way that does not impact class sizes and that does not impact specialists. So music, art. PE, those things we're trying to make sure are kept whole and not impacted at all. We will reduce our staff by one paraprofessional position as well. That's a position that was actually added mid-year. In, in response to needs of the school around recess and lunch and having additional supervision during those times. These are all things that are not ideal, but we are planning for them now as we move towards September, trying to make, make sure we do the best. At Williamstown Elementary School, we're planning on reducing by two teaching positions. Similar to at Lanesboro Elementary School, we are not planning on reducing music, art. PE, we're, we're not eliminating programs, we're not cutting back in, in those forms. We're probably looking at academic support areas. Perhaps looking at number of classroom sections per grade. We are also finding a way to work within the number of FTEs that we had budgeted for in FY twenty-three for paraprofessionals. This is six less than we had at our peak this year within Williamstown Elementary School. That, that peak was created by student needs being identified that were best and most immediately addressed by additional staff. To work with those students. This is something that, given the planning time that we have and given the cost structures that we need to work within. We're giving ourselves runway to try to figure out how to best. Staff the school with the number of paraprofessionals that sticks within the FTE count. That you have within your budget tonight, which is consistent with what we had planned for, for FY twenty-three. There are a number of ways to do that. But again, we need more time. We're just letting you know what. What are, what are options and what our thought process is. At Mount Greylock Regional School, we're going to reduce by two teaching positions. We don't have specifics on how we're going to do so at this time, although we do have a variety of options. None of them involve. Eliminating programs or significantly impacting the program of study. So we're hopeful that we can navigate that here over the next few months as we look at desired courses. Schedule options and, and try to get into the nuances there. We're also going to reduce at Mount Greylock Regional School by one paraprofessional. Relative to this year, and that is something that again, it will, it will tighten up schedules and, and workloads, but it's something that we think that we can manage. At the district level, we're continuing tonight to recommend that we do not fill the vacant Director of DEIB position. For this coming school year. We know that there has been and there will be more productive discussion around what that means and, and what we can do. In the absence of that position being filled, I'm just putting that out here right now to give you the full summary of, of where we stand. Going into FY twenty-three, we restructured our Facilities Department by eliminating the Director of Facilities position. In doing so, we elevated the roles of some of our. Building-level custodians to take on leadership roles within those buildings. We shifted some of the, some of the management and organizational responsibilities from the former Director of Facilities over, over to the Director of Operations and Technology. And in order to make room for that workload within the Director of Operations and Technologies work. We shifted some technology responsibilities into the realm of the Director of Academic Technology. So we've taken three director-level positions. Squeeze them into two. Fitting both, I think, the, the parameters that, that, that work well for being able to run the schools as efficiently as we can. But also to have the, the highest impact approaches that we can to solving the problems that exist within our buildings and, and with managing them. As best we can. We also eliminated a part-time administrative position. And within the District Office. That. Saw responsibilities being shifted from that part-time position to other members of the District Office. So that is the sum. Of the staffing changes that you see represented within the FY twenty-four budget versus FY twenty-three. Again, that is all in, in hopefully more eloquent form within the document that you have within your packet than I was able to just do. But it is there for everybody to see and to have. Now I just need to try, oh, there we go. So now we're back to the top and bottom line. We, we've taken a tour of, of the non-staff side, the staff side, and what this budget means in terms of. Impact on our schools, our operations and, and how we get to that four-point-six percent increase that we started with. When we looked at page one. So with that said, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. So I know you and Jake have mentioned previously that the middle school visual arts position. Would not be a new position, but could potentially be addressed through. Existing staff, and I was just wondering if that is something that. You've had a chance to look at at all. I know that you've been. Super busy with these other things, but I was just curious if there was an update on that.
One of the vehicles that we have available to us to address needs like the ones that have been. You know, brought, brought before us relative to visual arts. Is that, you know, all, all teachers are essentially by contract paid to teach five periods a day. And that can be comprised of three different prep periods a day. So you can teach three different courses. Over a five-period teaching day. We have in our toolkit, the ability to add a prep. For a certain amount of money. So someone is now teaching four distinct courses. We also have in our toolkit, the ability to actually add a teaching period. So that a teacher rather than teaching. Five periods a day can teach six periods a day. With our, with our three art teachers, that does present. An opportunity to, to, to add potentially. Three additional periods within that visual arts department, and that is something, it, it has some costs to it. And some of the costs in that department are, are likely to be in flux as we enter into next year. But, but, but those are a couple of the tools, Carrie, that we have that, that may allow us. I, I want to be real clear. It's, it's not going to be the same net effect as adding the FTE that we all wish we could add. But it, but it will be. It, it is the potential for more. Although not, not the full amount that, that I think the, the advocates would like to see or that we would necessarily like to see. I, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, I, if I could ask a follow-up question. Does that mean that we will have the ability or may have the ability to offer some visual arts? In the middle school as opposed to what we're doing now?
It, it does, it does. The, the other driver of this and, and, you know, I can speak this from, from another district point of view as a dad. The, the scheduling of middle school quote-unquote electives can also be a challenge that, that can drive. So e- even with the addition of a full-time FTE. Without a substantive schedule change that would have other dominos. Needing to fall across the seven-twelve span, it, it, it might not be that every student would get all of the art that they wanted. But, but, but this is, this is a piece that we are looking at in the big puzzle of scheduling our students for next year, that possibility of adding periods strategically. And where teachers have agreed to it, as is also laid out in our contract to, to be able to offer more.
Thank you. That's helpful.
You're welcome.
Were there any other questions for Joe? Or Jake? Jose?
Yeah, thanks Christina. And I want to thank you both. Again, for the thoughtfulness and of, of your presentations, presentation to us. Looking at. Our growth in student numbers across our district. And looking at the. Growth in, in real need, demonstrated need, student need across the district. You know, there's clear genuine worry, I think, probably for all of us that, in, in terms of our ability to, to meet those needs and to care for all of our students. We've been presented with a budget that. Is asking or basically projected to be a four-point-six increase from, from this year's budget. But with the inflation rate numbers as they are, we're really talking about. A budget decrease, a contraction of our support to our districts. On the order of two to four to five percent. That's, is that really what we're, we're talking about in terms of? What we're being asked to do as a district?
I, I, I think that is a perfectly accurate way to look at it. The, the other side of it, though, is that. When our economy experiences inflation, do our property taxes necessarily? See a, see an increase without creating an additional burden. On those same people that are experiencing the inflation and cost increases. I think that, that's the other side of it that. Especially we in our area of, of the state. Need to come to grips with more often than, than is comfortable. It's, it's that we, we don't see the same. Increases in. New building development. And resulting property tax increases that, that some others have and, and do. And so I think that's the flip side that, that any. You know, and, and I'm not. I'm not saying that they counterbalance each other. They are in opposition, however. And, and so that's, that's the other thing to keep in mind.
Then if I could just ask a, a follow-up then in terms of, of impact, and I know the both of you have, have worked really hard to minimize. The negative impacts that our students and, and teachers and staff could experience by this budget, you know, effectively a real budget reduction. A contraction in our support of our, our school district. Numbers that you reported, Joe, a, a decrease of about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to the District Office. The decrease, the number of teaching positions. At, at our elementary schools, at least at, at Williamstown. And at Lanesboro. With the highest percentage of, of demonstrated student need. We're looking at an increase or decrease in the number of classroom sections per grade. And I know this is, you know, we're doing our very best to, to meet. The requests that our towns have made of us, but. Can we speak to what we, you know, in terms of a, a, a worst-case scenario of, of what, of what those impacts will mean on our, on our students?
Just as a, as a quick, and, and Jake might want to speak to this in, in a second, but within Lanesboro Elementary School, we are not. Currently looking at that teaching position decrease. Being a reduction in the number of class sections and, and creating a significant increase in, in any class sizes. So that's, that's not. That's not currently on the table for Lanesboro Elementary School. Areas of academic support and, and other non-classroom areas. Are where we're looking at that potential one, one teacher reduction. So that's, that's just a clarifying point, but then I'll, I'll let Jake talk more about the impact on students.
Yeah, I just want to add just a quick, sorry Jake for interrupting. We, you know. On the heels of, of coming out in some way, shape or form of, of this pandemic. And, you know, what we've heard across our school district, you know, and, and, and we'll, you know. Think about the challenges that, yeah, all of our, all of our schools face, particularly Lanesboro Elementary with regards to, you know, supporting our students. Who have clearly been impacted by, by the pandemic. Are you concerned at all about? Our ability to support. Our most vulnerable students across our school district with, with this budget that you have before us?
That's an excellent question, Jose. I would, almost no matter what our budget was, I would be lying if I said I was comfortable with our ability to support our most vulnerable. Students, just, and, and I think probably would be joined by every single square on this Zoom call. The, this budget is protective of the positions and in the case of Williamstown Elementary. Programming that was added specifically. To address ver- very real. Very, in some cases apparent. Social and emotional needs. The, the mental health certified professional people and colleagues that we invited in to join us. Are going to still be with us in the same number. The social and emotional wellness course at Williamstown Elementary is going to fully remain as one of the. The rotation of, of specials. As um one of the the rotation of of specials that students have. Um, so. W- w- we are working to keep. Any, any and all reductions. Away from students in general. Wherever and whenever possible, and I think for the most part, we will be successful in doing that. And then we have that additional layer of need where we're trying to keep it. Keep any reduction from impacting some kids because they just simply can't afford to be impacted. Um, keeping it any any reductions as far away as possible from them. Uh, and that's what. Our vision thus far does. Uh, and then we would hope that our vision holds as we actually enter into the school year. And and we would hope that we don't have a a startup to the. Twenty three twenty four school year like we had to the twenty three twenty two twenty three school year. Where. You know, there there are mechanisms in place where if a student with very, very significant needs moves into the district. Um, in August or September, October, November, there's some mechanisms in place in the state. That help to account for that. Um, for students coming in from out of state. We are one hundred percent completely responding with with local monies. Um, and and veering in some instances way off of the course that we've charted through our our. Budget preparation months and months before, and and that is a situation we're dealing with this current school year. Um, and and I think four cases. So. We will do our best to support every single one of our students and and as always pay specific attention to. Um, not only supporting as best we can, but but mitigating any. Harmful effects as best we can for the most vulnerable and the most um a- in need.
And then an apologies, Christina, just a very quick follow up. And Jake. I know how sincere you are. Um. And what you're telling us, I I know this to be true for you and for your team and for all of our teachers, that the district will do its best. To support all of our children, you know, including those that are the most. Vulnerable. But would you disagree with the statement that this budget? That you presented to us makes it challenging to do just that?
I would certainly not disagree with that statement. I would agree with that statement.
I I'd like to add one more thing in response, just to contextualize some of this, Jose. Um. If if we did not eliminate one teaching position at Lanesboro. Uh, elementary, we'd be looking at the Lanesboro assessment instantly going from three percent up to about. Four point three percent. So that that's the impact of of. Either doing that or not doing it. And and just to be clear for the Lanesboro Elementary parents on on this. Um, we're not talking about reducing the number of class sections. We're not eliminating the social worker position. Uh, we're not talking about um reducing art music. The, you know, those are all things that we are trying to protect. Very, very closely and dearly because I I think over the last few years, we've worked very hard to make sure that. That those are there, that we've decreased class sizes, that we've been able to bring. A smaller number of students closer to their to their primary classroom teacher. We have added the social worker position and and we've made sure that the specialist areas remain strong. Um, for those students, both both for their enjoyment, but also for as they transit up to. Mount Greylock and have equal opportunity with others that are that are coming in. So um, those are all things that we're that we're holding. Uh, very firm on. Um, the addition of that one teaching position, though, would would quite honestly, would bring us into a very different realm. In terms of budget approval within the town of Lanesboro, just to be, just to be clear.
And and that said, I just want to. Call out some of the language that we're hearing. And again, this is not to um. To put put any anything that's been said in in a bad light, but this is the language that. Has been shared with us that that we're trying to keep. Impacts away from some of the most vulnerable students. We are going to do our best. To protect and 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 maintain services across um across our district. We're trying to protect services. I mean, what we're hearing is that this budget situation, this budget proposal doesn't actually guarantee. Services to our students doesn't actually guarantee that some of our most vulnerable students will be cared for. What we're trying to do is try our best. And I thi- I think that is important. I think that's what I'm hearing. And I and I would love to be corrected if I'm if I heard that wrong.
Yeah, I I think you heard that correctly, Jose. I might be saying the same thing. Uh. If we were asking for a six or a seven or an eight percent increase, there is um. You you know, making making guarantees in businesses that are entirely. Where where the product is hearts, minds and physical well being of human beings is is. I I'm. Uh, there might have been a time in my career where I would would readily offer guarantees, but but. Almost thirty years in at that time would not be now, knowing knowing what um I know. Um, I I would I would also add, though, you know, our concern and and I completely understand this. A. A a a parent, a guardian, a caretaker that sends a child to our school. Has one year for that child to be a kindergartner. That child will never be a kindergartner again. You you. You have one opportunity to do that as a parent, a guardian, a caretaker. You have one opportunity for your child to be a fourth grader or a seventh grader or an eleventh or a tenth grader. Or or wherever they are. There's there's these thirteen fleeting years that most students receive. Free public education and um all of those years count. In in their own special way. And I and I see that as a parent, I see it as an educator, I see it as a leader. We, though, on occasion, um. How? We're looking at this budget through the lenses of fiscal twenty five, fiscal twenty six, fiscal twenty seven as well. And w- we're, we worked really hard and spent much time in conversation and thought. Uh amongst ourselves with our team here in the district as well as many others around. Um, it it doesn't serve any of the the twelve hundred souls that call this their school. Or call our schools their school to. To artificially bump up one year in order to have to. Chop the next year off completely at the knees. Um, we're we're trying to work toward a system that is. Sustainable. And predictable over the next several years as we're as we're not convinced that things are going to get um. Better, you know, in in terms of cost containment necessarily, in terms of level of need. And and so you're you're absolutely correct that we're providing in in some ways a less than level service budget. Next year, even though the actual dollar figure has gone up. Um. I I would not want to artificially prop up this year, be it through. Town meeting additions, be it through going deeper into choice, deeper into E and D. Throwing open the floodgates of choice and taking, you know, fifty new students to to bring in those funds, which would not be fair on many levels. Um, I I I. This budget will provide us the tools to serve our kids well. Will come back to you midstream if we have very specific areas where it's not, but. We're we're trying to mitigate even harder conversations for next year and even another multiple harder for for fiscal twenty six. I don't know if that makes sense. Um, and I'll stop rambling, but but we we really. Are trying to approach next year with all of the earnestness and seriousness that it deserves. Because that's a year in the life of a child that a child will never ever get back. Um, even if they're a billionaire as an adult, they cannot buy back next school year for themselves. But we're also thinking ahead to the next school year and the next school year and the next school year and trying to do things in ways that will actually work. For for not only our kids, but the people who ultimately are accountable for for paying the bills for their local school system.
Thank you, Jake and Jose. Thank you for those questions and clarification. Steve, I see your hand up and before you go. We lost you at roll call. Did you join us back by phone at six oh eight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go for it.
Yep. So I I just want to say, uh, you know, thank you to Joe and Jake for all. The hard work they've done on this and thank you to all the members of the community who have contacted us. With their thoughts on these, you know, very challenging decisions. I just wanted to, you know, very briefly add. That as painful as these conversations are, it is very heartening to hear. The forethought and planning that is being done as this may not be. The only linear that's coming. This may not be the only challenging year. And for a lot of these decisions, the more lead time we have to think about. What is the best way for us to allocate our resources? How can we rethink about using what we have? To effectively solve the challenges facing our district, looking at the trends. Uh, you know, these are conversations that are great to have. And the earlier we start having them, the better. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any more questions for Jake or Joe? Okay, so, oh, Curtis, I didn't pause long enough. Jose, I should get a a demerit for that.
One demerit. Uh, uh, these are uh number questions, so maybe Joe. Uh, where'd you go there? Um, do we have percentage increase numbers for the last budget cycle? Both overall and for the towns handy?
Uh, I can pull that up in a second here. Um, so are are you looking for uh gross operating budget increase as a percentage?
Yeah, just for the four point six of this cycle.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, I I I kind of wanted to ask it in chat, but I don't think we have chat enabled, which I also get completely.
Yeah, good. Going in FY twenty three, we're looking at four point one percent. Um, and then our our increases last year to remember towns were uh two point six eight percent to the town of Lanesboro. And four point one percent to the town of Williamstown. Um. On the on the Williamstown side, a decent chunk of that was was driven by justifications around really dramatic growth and enrollment. Um, that that happened, uh, that that was, uh, I think between FY twenty two and FY twenty. Or FY twenty one and FY twenty three, we were looking at almost a ten percent, eleven, twelve percent growth in student enrollment, which. Um. While we've had a growth in enrollment this year, it it has not been that large.
Thank you. And one other question, and this might be a. Uh, go go away with it and come back with a question, uh, not for tonight, but I'm curious. The total percent increase. Uh, gross for this year's roughly four point six uh percent. Do you have what that percentage increase would be without the uh loss of positions? Uh. The Lanesboro loss position and with the acquiring of a middle school FTE. Uh, arts and the DEIB, like if we just Santa did up, not to Santa, but to. Instead of everyone gets everything they want, like what do we have a rough idea of what that percentage increase?
Yep, I've spent enough time with the numbers to build up, pull that up pretty quickly. We'd be looking at about uh seven and a half or eight percent. Increase depending upon. Benefits, uh, to what extent we were. Playing with the idea that benefits would be taken or not.
And you don't happen to have that by town, do you? I know with just the Lanesboro position, uh.
Yep, I can, uh. I I don't know the exact split across the two towns because, you know, that's hundred percent of each elementary school would go to. But back when we were looking at this. Um, I I believe we're in the ballpark of eight percent and nine percent.
Thank you.
Um. But please don't quote me on that. And and somebody in the audience can probably do that math faster than me as far as the. Possible arrangements of percentage increases, but I believe that's where we were when we were adding it all back in. It might have been a little bit less than that, though.
Even if it was seven, eight, it's in the ballpark and I thank you. That that's exactly what I wanted.
And it's also worth noting that uh with the chapter seventy numbers not coming out until just a couple of weeks ago. Before we had the six hundred, uh, the nine hundred thousand dollar increase above, you know. Last year, our increase in chapter seventy between FY twenty two and FY twenty three was three hundred thousand dollars. We were kind of on on a hope and a prayer that we would see the same kind of three hundred thousand dollar increase this year. So we were modeling things internally saying, let's let's not, you know, think the sky is completely falling. Let's just like. Hope for a good solid increase. This increase saved us from, uh, i- if I seem dour during this conversation today. It saved me from truly having a panic attack as I tried to figure out how to. How to navigate an additional potentially. Six hundred thousand dollars in cost cutting to bring the same percentage increases.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for those questions, Cur. Formation, Joe. Does anybody else have questions? Jose? Sorry, I can't see your hand because it matches the color.
Apologies, yeah. And I'm happy to defer. I would I would prefer to defer if others have questions and and leave my question for later. All right, but I'll, you know, seeing no other hands, I'll I'll go ahead and ask it. So there was something that was said. Um, that I want to uh revisit and it was, uh, um, I think Jake, you might have, you might have, um. Brought this up about, you know, if we were to. Ask for a a big budget increase, you know, I think you said to artificially inflate the budget, it would mean for a really difficult. Or very hard conversation uh in in future fiscal years. And what we're trying to do is is mitigate. For those hard conversations, but I think embedded in there, and I I think it was explicit, and I'm not sure, it could have been you, Joe, or or Jake that that brought this up, that. You are projecting hard conversations to to come, um, regardless of. Of how we uh, of how we move on this on this budget. Um, you know, given that uh our district is becoming. Increasingly diverse and and given the demonstrated needs we have seen, challenges we have seen. And and trauma that many of our kids have experienced in our district due to um, you know, prejudice. Bias, um. Bigotry. Uh, we as a district identify the position of of director of diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging. As being the most efficient and effective way that we can support professional development. To support our students, to support staff across the district, to support parents across the district. We were told in a previous meeting that um this position is effectively on hold, right? There's no way to replicate. The expertise um and the work that a person, a well trained person in this position could provide the district. Like we've also heard a very convincing case for providing um for uh, you know, visual arts in the middle school. And the great need and great benefits that allowing for the the visual arts uh in the middle school could could have for our students. Um. But I'm getting a sense that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, these positions or these opportunities to better support. Are increasingly diverse students, wonderful students. Um, that we're, we've reached a limit in terms of what we can provide as a district. And is is that correct? It seems like to me, um, I think, uh, would, I would like to hear if we're, uh, if we can have an honest. And I know you're always sincere. I know you're always honest, but what, you know, if we could hear. What you think about our ability to. To fill, eventually fill this position of of director of DEIB and eventually support visual arts in our middle school. Are we, it seems like those are are long shots given the hard conversations that are being projected into the future.
I. My my natural, my natural approach to things, whether it's in um. My personal life as I, and I can give you the names and cell phone numbers of people that would attest to this who are closest to me. Or or in my professional life is to always assume the worst case scenario. and then be, um, hopefully pleasantly surprised when when the third or fourth worst happens, or sometimes the best case. Preparing or helping to prepare my my third budget in this district. Um, la- the the previous two years, we had COVID money coming in. Um, we had larger percentages, I believe, at the end of the day, from both of our, uh, member towns coming in than than sort of the 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 suggestions that we received this year. Um, on the other hand, we, the the constant advocacy that many of us do, uh, including you all through the M A S C, Joe and I through the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents as individual people. Um, and and then just as leaders in the community and in the region here in the Berkshires, the the constant pressure we put on our our, um, elected representatives that the the cost of educating students is is going up at a a the the level of need and what it takes to educate all students, including those with 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 very, very specific needs that they deserve to have met um, is is outpacing things, even if we didn't have inflation, even if we didn't have everything costing more. Um, I I my experience would suggest that the the collective level of need of our students is going to eclipse um, the communities and the state's ability and willingness to pay for what we would be doing if we were doing everything that we could be doing. Having said that, this year is an exercise in seeing, um, are are there things that where when we compare ourselves to the other, uh, two hundred and seventy so other school districts across the state where for whatever reason, and and I'm certain with good intentions and good hearts as well as thinking behind it, we just appear to be out of line in in where we invest our money versus where other places invest their money. A a budget challenge is a good opportunity to force oneself and to force oneself institutionally to take a good look at at what can we do better? What can we do more efficiently? We're doing that. We will continue to do that in an ongoing basis. Once this budget's adopted, once we get into the school year next year. Um, I I always think where there is a will, there is a way. When it, when when we opened up this presentation with the there, there's no change in our vision. There's no change in our direction. There's no change in in what we want to do or the type of professionals we believe we need and must have to do it. Now is not the time. Um, I'm not sure that next year will be the time, but we will have another year under our belts of thinking, what maybe could we do differently? What maybe could we do more efficiently? What maybe could we do without that's that's not really hitting, um? Well, you know, in the center of the of the target for kids that we may be able to do some of these things that we know we need to do and and that our community expects of us and and fairly expects of us. Uh, you know, so so I I'm I I am very naturally a a pessimist around things like this, but, uh, but I can't give into that on this one. We're going to keep, we're going to keep pushing for the things that our kids need and and thinking about and listening to the community and looking at ourselves to figure out ways to do it. Um, this year, just, uh, uh, if you would have asked me last year as we were preparing our budget for the current school year, where we would be this year, I I would have likely said we're going to need to consider some things because I knew the COVID money was was running, uh, uh, away. Uh, I I would not have, I would not have said we would be at the point where we're having the level in depth of difficult conversations that we are right now, not not only saying we can't fulfill our vision for what we need that's new, but looking at what we currently have that we could live without.
Thank you. Thank you, Jose. Okay, are we ready to move on? So next up on the agenda is public comment. We have two individuals who signed up ahead of time. Um, as we started this meeting, I've seen community members come and go. At one point, there were twenty. Um, I will run through the rules of public comment, and then anyone who's here, um, that didn't get to sign up for public comment ahead of time, if you could raise your virtual hand or your physical hand, um, Bree, I see you, um, please do so. And in all fairness, I will call on you in the order that I can see you on my screen because I don't know how else to do that. Um, but in our, for our son sign up currently, Kim Nichol would go first and Carolyn would go second. So just as a reminder, um, we, uh, allow three minutes per speaker. If you could just tell us your name, the town you are from and to, um, which topic on the item on the agenda you're speaking to, that would be awesome. Is there a member of the committee who would be willing to use their timing devices to time people as they speak? Julia, awesome. Okay, so first up is Kim Nichol.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Christina. Um, my name's Kim Nichol. I live in Williamstown and I have a child, um, who attends school in the district. Um, and I'm here tonight to read a letter on behalf of the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Parent Caregiver Action Network, um, made up of parents uh, who have children in the district. Um, Dear school committee members, as you consider the budget this evening, we urge you to remember the commitment you made one year ago to allocate funds for the hiring of a director of diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, or D E I B, for the Mount Greylock Regional School District. This position was created out of necessity, the concerning number of bias incidents, the lack of existing capacity within the district, and the results of the project compiled by consultant Cor- Courtney Tunis. These were all provided by the leaders of the district and members of the public as evidence that this position was necessary. In the one point five years since Ms. Tunis conducted her surveys, interviews and focus groups across the district, many of us have been waiting intently for the director of D E I B to be hired as we have been consistently asked by Superintendent McCandless to wait until we have a director. According to the superintendent, a director of D E I B is the person who will be in charge or would be in charge of following up on the findings within the report and spearheading the next steps to improve the culture of D E I B in the district. We would like to remind the committee that Ms. Tunis's report highlighted that students across our district are experiencing bias regularly. As an aside, I'd like to say, and several incidents this week alone that are seriously impacting their abilities to feel a sense of belonging and their capacities to learn. Here are some of the types of bias that students and families reported. Preferential treatment for athletes, Williamstown versus Lanesboro bias as a proxy for socioeconomic bias, racial bias, gender bias, ideological bias, preferential treatment for academic stars. While we continue to believe that a director of D E I B would be the most impactful way to begin to shift the culture and achieve a district culture that would be more welcoming to all of our students, we have recently heard Superintendent McCandless say that he believes that that capacity currently exists within the district to accomplish this work. We are asking for transparency and accountability to achieve specific objectives related to diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging within the Mount Greylock Regional School District beginning immediately. One, a task force convened by the superintendent prior to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four academic year. The superintendent has said there are people within the district ready to do this work. We would like to see a D E I B task force composed of these stakeholders who are ready to do the work. Teachers, community members, parents, administrators, young people, whomever is ready and willing to collaborate and lead this work. Two, clear D E I B related curriculum objectives for K through twelve that are articulated publicly with a timeline for implementation. Three, clearly articulated school climate goals that prioritize the well-being of all students. Four, specific D E I B related priorities that will guide this work for the next three years within the district. These priorities should be informed by the school improvement plans and other initiatives already being prioritized within the district. For all of these initiatives, specific people and roles need to be identified as being responsible for carrying out this work. This work cannot wait. As we heard tonight, our children have one opportunity at K through twelve education. Our children, their safety and their learning are too important to delay focusing on improving our district's approach to making every child feel a sense of belonging within their school community. Sincerely, Kim Nichol, on behalf of the D E I B P C N Leadership Committee. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Kim.
Um, Cr- Christina?
Yes.
I'm happy to do the timing. I'm not quite, and thank you, Kim. Um, it that went for three minutes and then I said another thirty seconds. So I just want to make that clear and apology apologies for the length that may add to others, but I do think I just want to be fair to anyone who wants to speak. Um, I will hold up the phone at th- at three minutes, and that means there's thirty more seconds.
Thank you.
And it will sting like that. Thank you.
Okay, Caroline, is it Caroline or Carolyn?
Hi, it's Carolyn.
Okay, Carolyn, you are next.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Carolyn McHugh, and I'm a resident of Williamstown with two kids at Wes. Um, I will keep this brief, but I am here tonight to urge the school committee to please find a way to bring visual arts to the middle school at Mount Greylock for next year. Um, being a recent, uh, transplant to Williamstown, we have been just in awe at the school system here. We've been so pleased with everything we have encountered. So thank you for all of the work that you do. Um, you can imagine then my surprise to find out there is no visual arts curriculum or visual arts teacher at the middle school. And one of my children will be going there next year. So I have, this is near and dear to my heart, and I do have personal interest in this. Um, but I do think it's important, um, that visual arts, it's it's an important part of education for any child in our community. It's as important as math or science. And I can attest to that as someone who is a creative professional today, that if I had not had that spark when I was a kid, who knows where I would have ended up, but I found that because of visual arts, and I want to bring that to our kids, to all kids. So please, I know you have a lot of challenges ahead of you in terms of this budget, but if you can find a way, we would really, really appreciate bringing a visual arts teacher to the middle school next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bree, I know you don't have your virtual hand up, but I saw your virtual hand, your non-virtual hand first. So you're next.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'm Bree Delaraca. I'm sure you all know why I'm here, um, because I'm reappearing again to advocate for bringing a visual arts curriculum and teacher to the middle school next year, um, as proposed in January. The arts are critical to strong and social emotional development of our students. Research demonstrates that students who receive consistent exposure and engagement with a dedicated visual arts curriculum have better attendance, they have deeper social and emotional engagement, and they have greater academic achievements. Even more importantly, underserved students, multilingual learners, and those coming from lower socioeconomic backgrounds show an even more profound response to visual arts education when given access to it. Greylock Middle School is lagging behind middle schools in Massachusetts, as well as in Berkshire County when it comes to offering visual arts classes. Nearly eighty percent of Massachusetts middle school students have access to visual arts education, whereas none of our students have access to regular visual arts education. We remain an outlier in Berkshire County middle schools as one of the very few schools that does not offer a dedicated visual arts class to our students. We are an arts-rich community, but our middle school students are attending every school. And I think there is absolutely no room for it. I think it should change and it must change and it must change immediately. Um, so I'm urging you to prioritize visual arts in the budget. Um, uh, and I would like to say, if I had like a another moment, that I support the school budget and a student-centered, student-supported school budget. We are living in an unprecedented time and our kids are struggling. And we have learned more than any other time in any other moment in history, how essential and important what a bedrock our schools are to our community, not only financially in terms of our property values and the attraction of others to our community, but also in terms of philosophically, developmentally, we see the impact it has when we cannot meet our students' needs, and they have gone unmet for many years now. I do, I I strongly hope that the school committee advocates on behalf of a student-centered budget and proposes that to the town. I strongly urge the committee to consider sending a student-centered budget to the town, even if that means in showing an increase of seven percent, and I hope you will join me in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person or I see on my screen is Arts at M G R H S.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, I I'm driving to Boston with my son who's, um, looking at colleges, so forgive me for being in the car. Um, but my name is Amy Holt Zappel, and, um, I have two students. I live in Williamstown and I have two students uh, in the system, uh, one in seventh grade and one in twelfth grade. I've already, uh, presented at at at, uh, a former school committee, and I would just like to voice my support again for book, for the visual arts in the middle school. Um, and also for the E D I, uh, position. I think these are essential to the well-being and health of our children. Um, I am, I am I am very, very grateful for the work that I see Jake and and everyone doing. I can understand that this is so difficult and I appreciate, um, the tremendous energy that is going into, um, the care for our vulnerable, our most vulnerable students. And I just want to say that art, I I am myself a teacher of the arts, that art is a space and place where students can find themselves, can belong, can experience um, a way of expressing themselves in the world that is valuable and central to their education. And I want to echo the idea that arts is not merely extracurricular, but an essential component of a student's education along with math, English, history, and these other studies that we value. And I appreciate so much the arts curriculum that does exist at Mount Greylock. The music is extraordinary. Um, my son's experience in visual arts in high school has been paramount, and I would love for the middle schoolers to experience that as well. I urge the school committee to please vote to increase the budget to allow for these positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I see Simon.
Thank you so much. My name is Simon Holt Zappel. You just heard from my far better half. Um, very briefly, I spent ten years working as a classroom social studies teacher, teaching U S history, and then a further fifteen years as a senior administrator in a school. I was the academic director, and then I tried to balance the budget unsuccessfully for several years. Um, so I appreciate that this conversation is driven by a huge amount of care, a huge amount of just superb human beings who my wife and I encounter on a regular basis as we interact with the school system over these years. Um, and people who are just obviously just in it for completely the right reasons. The question I have, and it's really, I'm hoping that these whatever two minutes and fifteen seconds can actually be just a tiny bit of dialogue. I'm not sure if that's even allowed. But so my question is, um, as I listened to this and I was like, okay, I need to visualize this system. I heard three percent is the number that's been given by the town. And my question is, where, what makes the three percent magic? And why can't the school committee ask her what it feels like it needs? And then begin the dialogue from there with the finance committee of the town. And then begin the dialogue from there with the finance committee of the town.
Simon, we don't typically have back and forth conversations during public comment, but we will most likely have that discussion when we have our budget discussion after public comment.
And so how does, how can I be a part of that?
You give public comment and then you listen to our conversation.
So dialogue is not really on the docket?
Nope.
Great, okay. So can I, can, so no one will respond to my question?
Not at this time.
I see. So really it's about comment. Okay, I guess that's my comment. Keep up the good work. Ask for the money you need. Cause you know, chasing fifteen hundred hours trying to slice a half a percentage point off a budget doesn't do the people who we're all here for any good. And so I would just say, question the data you get from the finance committee that says three percent is the magic number. Because three percent may or may not be the magic number and until the townspeople have gotten a pretty broad sampling by the finance committee, I don't think the finance committee knows the right number for the students in this school, in this district. And thank you for your time and work on this.
Thank you. I saw Christine. Oh, there she is. Christine, you're next.
Yep, I'm here. Knowing that this is just a comment and we can't have a dialogue is good to know. Because I did have a few questions. So I will just throw them out there and if you get to them, you do. I, I'm actually in favor of a director of DEI representation and also the visual arts. I, I was a music major in undergrad. I've taught art and I understand the importance of all, all of it. And I know that we can all, we all can name the benefits of having strong arts in school. And I, I'm just wondering as I listen to this, if there has been a conversation about integrating the arts in the general curriculum as another alternative to a, a, a teacher teaching more classes or a full-time position. There's lots of research about integrating the arts in the curriculum. It does require PD for teachers, but I know Pittsfield Public Schools and the North Adams Public Schools have a Director of Arts Integration who goes and works not only in the schools, but works with teachers to help integrate the arts in the general curriculum. So I'm curious whether that's been a conversation because I think that would open up art, art learning to all students and not just students who take it as an elective. And if all of our students are engaged in the arts through the general curriculum, then, and if they're all feeling represented, understood and respected, then maybe we would see less social, emotional and behavioral issues that require funding on the other end of that. So that is my comment.
Thank you. Hugh Daly, you are next, I believe.
Uh, let's see, can you hear me?
Sure can.
I apologize, I'm gonna have to keep it on, uh, off the video if that's all right. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Uh, thank you to the school committee and to Joe and Jake for putting together this budget. I, I have worked closely with them around this. And I'd have, I think I have two things to, that I, I hear you guys talking about that I'd like to maybe help focus on. One is that this, it's, it's not fun, but this is the job. The allocation of scarce resources and the prioritization of those things is, is what you've been elected to do. And it's, I'm, I'm in complete sympathy with you with the, the desire potentially outweighing the ability to, to fund. And that's, that is a, this is where the district has to, you know, the way I put it is analyze, prioritize and reorganize, right? You have to get, get, make sure you can get what you need done with the funds available. I have complete confidence in Jake and the business office with Joe to, to make sure the students' needs will be met. It's a little, I hope everybody is hearing from Jake that he is saying, we are going to get the job done. It would be easier, it would be maybe, uh, be, uh, we could be done easier with more money, but it's not that the job's not going to get done. So I, I really want to, in my opinion, I feel the district will support the students it needs to support in the way that they need to be supported with the funds that they've asked for. To the degree the towns are both approaching tax problems for their residents, I just want you to keep a broad enough scope of people who could be impacted by tax, by, by this, the school budget to recognize that they, there's a large community of people who are feeling a lot of pinches from a lot of different places and this is the only budget they get to vote on. People, I, I'd prefer to have ourselves, you know, present a, a very efficient budget and get the community behind it rather than, you know, shoot for the moon and deal with the fallout. Thank you again very much. I know this is a very difficult decision. I, I, I trust all of you to do, to do the best you can. I have great faith in Joe and Jake. Thank you.
Thank you. Miles, I saw you next.
Hi, yes, I'm Miles Evans. I'm a parent of a high schooler at Mount Greylock. I, I just wanted to reiterate what some of the other parents had said about questioning just a three percent increase. Just wondering whether, why that needs to be etched in stone and why, why we couldn't maybe ask for the things that we actually think we might need. I think that, I, I think that the arts are a huge benefit to our students. I've seen it in my own life, in my daughter's life, but also it's borne out in the numbers that Bree was mentioning. The data backs that up. I think that also the DEI director is a really good idea. I think that something that we, that I, I thought was really resonant to me was that that three percent increase does not keep pace with inflation. And I think something that people, I would like people to kind of bear in mind is that these, the health of a school system directly relates to whether people want to move into that school system. I can tell you anecdotally that the reason why I am here is because we did research on all the schools in Berkshire County, basically, in the area where we were going to be employed. And we chose where we live now because of the school system. And it's because of the resources and the seriousness with which it was going to, you know, with which it conducted its business. And there was a particular house that we were looking at that we did not choose because of the decisions of that school district. So I just would like that to be known that this, this is not just like today or this year, but it's also like an investment in years to come. And what kind of signal you're putting out into the world about what, you know, where we're going, what direction we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I see Bianchi A's iPad.
Hi Christina, this is me. Ashley Bianchi, Williamstown resident, parent of an eighth grader. Sorry, on my iPad, so I forget where to look. I will not spend much time here, but just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the work of this committee. Several friends and acquaintances that serve so diligently on this committee. So I just wanted to say thank you. I send my full admiration to you for the work that you do, the time that you spend to support my child and others. I'm just pleading tonight that you continue that support and continue it in the same way that you've done before. And from what I've heard, the, you can't do that with a three percent increase only. With inflation, it is a decrease in support and that is really disheartening in the moment that our students need you most. I liken this a little bit to, a few weeks ago when we had to vote in Williamstown on the fire district increase. And none, you know, there are a lot of people who perhaps didn't want to have that tax burden either. But I distinctly remember the shift of the crowd when a Williams student stood up and talked about his safety being at risk because of the way the Williamstown Fire Department needed to be revised. And I feel strongly that the same dire straits are, are perhaps with us now. That the safety of our students, I know is your utmost concern. And I'm just plea that you continue to support our students. I know you're doing it. And I just plea that you continue to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands up, but I will pause for thirty seconds. See if anyone else would like to make public comment. Okay, I don't see any other commenter, so we will move on to the school committee discussion of the FY twenty-four budget. Julia.
I've, I've spent the last week thinking hard, certainly about the DEI director since that was the main crux of our conversation last week. And I really take to heart the comments about, Ashley's about keeping our kids safe and cared for. And also the arts, I, you know, all the folks who spoke in favor of the arts and I firmly believe in arts education as well. I realize what we are doing, what we did as a committee last week and what our community is doing is advocating for specific positions instead of outcomes. And I would, I have the deepest faith in Jake and Joe. And I wonder if we can change this conversation to name the outcomes we want to see and let Jake and Joe and the team identify the way to make that happen. And it's a little bit like Kim Nichol's public comment naming some specific goals that maybe could be set around DEI without actually hiring the DEIB director. And even though I think in the long run, that is probably a position we need, I, I think I, I want us to talk about the outcomes and the goals and, and make those clear. And then ask Jake and Joe to, to meet those.
Thanks, Julia, Julia Jose.
Thank you, Christina, and thank you, Julia, for that comment. So I try to figure out a little more my hand here. I think my, my concern with the current budget that is being proposed to us is that, you know, we're looking at a retraction of support by our member towns to the school districts, as justified as that might be. If we are gonna transition away from particular positions and, and, and look towards outcomes, those outcomes need to be, you know, that involves labor, that involves labor and ask among, you know, across a, a district that is having already to do, as we can see in, in how our demographics are, are changing, are having to do much more with much less. And, and I, and I share the concern by many members of our community that have spoken here today that, you know, this budget proposal does not reflect what we actually need as a district without these additional, you know, outcomes that we might be asking of ourselves with regards to diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging in the visual arts. And, and I find that deeply problematic. It's not, you know, clear to me, you know, that, that we're gonna be able to satisfy the mission that we have for ourselves to be, you know, a community that supports all learners in, in, in every shape and form as they, as they, as they, as they are within our district.
Thanks, Jose. Joe or Jake, would you be willing to talk about where the three percent number came from? I know we talked about it last week, but it would probably be good to revisit that.
Sure. I'll, I'll start and then Joe can perhaps jump in and save me. And, and I'll try to, to answer. Simon, I, your, your question about what, what can the school committee take in by way of budget? So, you know, in terms of, in terms of the, the way that powers separate and this stands in a municipal school district like, you know, a Lee or a Lennox or a Pittsfield, it stands the same as it does in, in a, in a regional school district like us or Berkshire Hills or, or Central Berkshire. The, the school committee is charged with adopting a budget that represents the interests of students. And that number is often in opposition to the, to a municipal or, or a town finance committee, which needs to make everything work in a way that is affordable for the town and sustainable for the town. With, with much deeper expertise and into how millage rates interact with, with the, the, the actual value of houses and the assessed values of, of properties and things like that. So in, in, in short answer to your question, the school committee can bring any budget that the school committee wishes to, to town meetings. The, the three percent came from, we, we absolutely put together, here's, here's what we need to be level to the current year, here's what we need to be level plus the, the director of DEIB, plus the art teacher, plus other things that were asked for via the school councils. Plus, plus the things that, that our own observations led us to think would be helpful, some of which, you know, were, were not so much around people, but were so much around different types of investments. The, the, the three percent good practice for a school district is to, is to speak with the municipal powers or the town powers and, and get an idea of what they're thinking, get an idea of what other departments are doing. The, the, the three percent really came around as a, you know, this is my third budget here in, in Mount Greylock Regional School District. My experience thus far with the two previous budgets is that we have two towns that want to say yes to their schools. They care about their kids. They invest deeply in their school buildings. They invest deeply in the people that actually do the work within those school buildings. They help us take care of those school buildings and they support those school buildings through volunteerism, through coming to events, et cetera. So, so we enter into these conversations knowing that we have two communities who have different things going on, different desires, different wants and needs, but, but that would agree that supporting their schools are important. What we heard in separate conversations with those towns is, you know, this is everything we have going on and these are, this is the size that we, we think we can support in terms of keeping things affordable for people and in order to, to get trajectories maybe from here in terms of property taxes to maybe here in terms of property taxes. It's not helpful for those of you who are, maybe aren't watching this. I was taking a steeper trajectory to a, to a, a, a less steep trajectory with my hands. And, and then we, we did have, Joe and I hosted a gathering for, you know, both of our towns together. And, and it did just, you know, we hit at a point where three percent, it, for some folks was a stretch budget. For some folks wishing they could do much better, but, but that's, that's how we arrived at the three percent. And, and just not- And, and just, you know, nobody likes to talk about the, including the person that is talking right now. Nobody likes to talk about the, the political realities that, that do impact this work that we approach with heads and hearts. But at the end of the day, we ask our, our elected and appointed officials within both of our towns to also help us understand what is going to be passed, what is likely to get passed at a town meeting. And, and that's another factor in what we go out to ask for, which is, you know, we, we do not want to be in a position of, of you know, having a budget necessarily rejected at a town meeting. There are processes in place for when that eventuality happens, as it will at some point. But, but it is a disruptive process no, no matter what. So, you know, there's, there's a mix of real life affordability, real life practicality and always with, as you can hear from the school committee, always from the school committee and from this school committee in particular, pushing back against that notion. But also seeing a, a, the, the, the realities that we may be looking at in one town, both towns and in the region. So, Joe, I don't know if you want to add to, to, to that explanation or not.
No, I, I can certainly respond to any questions that, that it triggers.
Thank you, Jake. Curtis?
Hypothetically, if we were to ask for a much higher percentage and take it to the towns and the towns said no, what for, for those outside of the process and those of us who don't remember, what, what happens next? Like what does that set in motion?
What, what would happen next is if either town votes down the budget that we bring forward first, that results would come back to the school committee. The school committee would then need to figure out what to do in response that you, you would have three options to increase your budget, keep your budget the same or decrease it and, and say to the towns, this one's going back to you for another vote. If you run out of time, like if, if special town meetings don't happen and if both towns don't vote in favor of whatever budget results, as of July one, you would go into what, what the, what the state calls a one twelfth budget mode, which is you would start to assess one twelfth of what you had assessed for the previous year for the month of July and so on in August until hopefully you come to a resolution and you, and you jump to that new assessment set. I think I just gave you every parameter in detail. You know, there's some other things within there around the timing of the special town meetings and things like that, but that's, that's the cliff.
Thank you. One other question, this can be a go do, do math and come back question, but do you have the deltas for like the three or four previous years handy for, for overall gross and town asks? And like whenever you have them.
Yeah, for FY twenty three, we had brought forward two point six eight percent for Lansbury, four point one percent for Williamstown. In FY twenty two, it was a two percent for Lansbury, one point nine three percent for Williamstown.
Do you have any further back than that by any chance? Sorry, folks.
I, I might, that, that one might be a little bit more difficult because it's, it's actually before my time. So Google Sheets are not as much, my friend. I, I can, I can come back to you with that one in a sec.
Thank you. And I, I really appreciate a lot of the comments that people had about understanding how hard the job is that we're trying to do and they were all just people in the same communities, you just trying to make it work. And also I remind people that like half of us have only been on this committee for a year or two. And it's been a lot of fun unpacking and repacking this process and learning how to do it. So thanks for that opportunity.
In FY twenty one, it looks as though, if I'm reading this correctly, because the percentages aren't written there, but right around zero and zero. So it was level.
That sounds about right, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Julia.
I just wanted to ask the follow-up question to Curtis's question about what happens. I think we heard the mechanical answer, which is, which is appropriate, but this is also a relationship and a partnership with our towns and I've heard Jake and Joe talk about that as well. And I wondered if you could share like the impact on the partnership it can create if we you know, push too hard and don't, don't collaborate.
I actually, I, I think perhaps a, a more appropriate way to look at that would be to, well, there, there are a couple of different things that can happen when you put forward a budget that's larger than what the town halls are advocating for. The first is that you can go in ahead and, and rally a lot of people and, and get votes in favor during town meeting and pass those budgets. Feels good. It, it, it might end well. It, it might also lead to more challenging times trying to mutually develop whatever plans you need for the future. With the folks within those town committees and, and the town hall administrations that, that you need to work with on a, on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. So that's, that's one option. Another option is if, if you put forward a large budget, a larger budget than is preferred and that's voted down. You, you can certainly go back to your town halls and say, well, here's why we were advocating for that. When we bring this new number back for you, can we somehow gain support and can we try to, try to get more people on the side of, of voting in favor? Decreasing it slightly or decreasing it significantly. You know, that's something where, where I think we, we would be in relatively uncharted territory. Given, given the ways that we've worked with our towns over the years. I think some school committee members might, might have history going back farther and, and could provide more color commentary on that. But, you know, that's an option too. And, and then I think the, the last case in terms of relationships that's worth touching on especially is to, is to know that, that if we do go in with a budget that, that is per the town's requests for this year. To, to do that with the caveats that say, here are the things that, that our community holds, holds with highest priority and, and we are going to try to make sure that those happen in coming years. What do we need to do within our towns to, to rally support and, and funding and, and the ability to, to cover expenses for larger budgets going forward? Which, which I think would probably come back from both towns saying, great, help us build that property tax base, help us help us with economic development in ways that can support that. And, and that would come in the form of supporting legislation that, that allows for increasing revenues coming in without doing that on the backs of increasing property tax rates in both towns. That's what I'm guessing, but I'm, I'm hypothesizing a fair amount there. Because it's, it's not honestly something that, that I think is commonly done. But, but I would love to see that and I would love to see more advocacy within the state level to, to try to make sure that this chapter seventy increases is not the last and that it, it creates more room for us operating in the future. Because for a long time, in, in my opinion, the state's chapter seventy formula, that the way it goes about funding education, although it's very well intentioned and, and I think it started off on exactly the right course, it, it hasn't kept up with the realities of the fixed costs and the, and, and the cost that we carry per pupil and, and per staff member in, in order to exist. So and I, that's, I don't know if you're looking for that level of philosophical answer, but that's the, that's what I can offer up.
Thanks, Joe. Jose, I saw your hand and then Carrie.
Thanks, Christina. I just was hoping that Jake and, and Joe could report to us. We've, you know, the our much appreciated local press to cover the meeting that you both had with the Williamstown Finance Committee yesterday, because if we could just get some feedback on what you heard from this proposed budget, that would be great. And then I, I think my understanding is that you've yet to meet with the Lansbury Finance Committee. And if that's correct, could you give us a sense on what you can expect to hear from, from them when you share this proposal with them? Thanks.
Yeah, I can, I can give a little bit and then, and then when I miss it up, Jake can, Jake can save me this time. But the, the norm historically is that we get figures like chapter seventy figures in January, which gives us plenty of time to be able to develop a budget that incorporates that information and have it ready for, for public hearing in early March and then finance committee presentations later in March. That's been the norm. This year with the change in leadership at the state level and, and the, the late arrival of the, of the full governor's team. That forced after seventy into March, which meant that this year we've had trouble scheduling the, the order of things in the way that we normally do. We, we met with Williamstown Finance Committee last night. We're holding the public hearing tonight. And then we're meeting with Lansbury's Finance Committee and Select Board on Monday night. So it's a little bit of a mishmash relative to what the, the usual lockstep process that we've tried to keep. That's part one. Part two, Williamstown last night, I, I, I think there was sympathy for the predicament that we presented, which is largely what, what we also committed time to tonight. There were thanks for us being as responsive as we could to, to the request from town hall around trying to figure out how to, how to not have four or five, six percent budgets come, come to them. I think other departments in town are, are struggling with similar things and, and having mixed results. And that, that puts the finance committee into a difficult position where, where they are to some extent the arbiter of of how town hall advocates for approving a budget or not approving a budget for a given department or, or for us, a, a given entity that relies upon them. So, so I think that, and then the last thing that I'll say there is they keep a close eye on the degree to which we are spending increases and sources other than town assessment can either support that or, or not support it. And I think that with our evolving accounts, they certainly see that deficit spending as something that could be problematic in the future and and, and their concern for what that means for whether, whether we're able to come back with similar percentage increases going forward, or if we're going to come back with a much larger percentage increase at some point. That's, that's something that, that they're trying to keep a close eye on and, and know from year to year. So I think they, they exited last night realizing that if, that if the wind doesn't turn in our favor in terms of health insurance increases, tuition expenses, transportation costs. And, and if we aren't able to keep existing staff salaries growth in, in some kind of check that, that they will, they and we will, will be in a more difficult spot. So I think all, all of that, that's, that's my summary from, from where I was sitting. But I think other school committee members here can also, you know, who, who are there last night in attendance can, can provide perhaps more, more info too. And then I'll just wrap up with, in terms of Lansbury, I, I think that the town officials asked us to make sure that we did not exceed the three percent, that that would be a stretch, given the concerns that they have around other areas within the town that, that have been that have not seen the levels of funding and the increases that they've needed for, for years on end that they feel like they need to address as well as the potential impact of, of continued work on a police station, work towards a police station, whether that's incurring costs this coming year or, or if they're just planning for what that means for a couple of years from now. So I think going into Monday night, we, we are, we are hopeful that our partners within the town are are feeling the same way that, that they did, that that three percent would be a stretch but supportable, but we're also not, you know, we we won't know until, until we know.
Thanks, Joe. Carrie.
So I wonder if this would be a good time to respond to Julia's question from earlier because another way to increase the budget without increasing the town assessments is to use more of our reserves.
Yep, certainly. And, and some of that speaks to, and, and Julia, to be honest, over the years, it's been more art than science as far as we, we don't have specific percentages of our operating budget that, that we hope to hold in reserve and, and things like that. I, I can speak from, from my experience as we've tried to, to gain a handle on it over the last couple of years. We have held far more within our revolving accounts in tuition and choice than many school districts, most school districts do across the state. We have a, a fairly positive situation in terms of having to tuitioning in towns that, that we have strong relationships with longstanding tuition agreements. And school choice net in, that is pretty extraordinary. We, we have far more students interested in school choicing in than we do school choicing out. That has allowed us to, to have those accounts be real buffers. Whereas other towns have had experiences over, over ten, fifteen, twenty years where they do need to go back for additional mid-year town meetings to try to approve expenses because they're going to need it in, in order to make payroll associated with the kinds of things that we've experienced this year, which is new needs being identified that we are legally, in addition to morally, ethically required to respond to, that we're not budgeted for. And so the strength of revolving accounts to be able to weather those storms, that's, that's really where school districts, if they can want to keep them. Now, in terms of the total dollar value of those accounts that, that can weather the storms, given the size of our school district at around twelve hundred students, a four or five hundred thousand dollar type burst in expenditures in, in a given year as a result of student need, not unheard of. Bringing that up to seven hundred and fifty thousand or a million would be a, a, a a massive year. So in terms of the type of cushion that you would need within the current environment, like that's where, that's our rainy day fund that protects us from needing to do something that, that is really pushing the, the true panic button. Now, we are in a year this year where our out of district tuition, associated transportation, substitute teaching costs associated with, with long-term leave by, by staff that we had no way to interpret or, or forecast. And maintenance costs associated with things breaking down within our, within our school buildings before their life expectancy would have, would have indicated. We've had all four of those happen. I'm thankful that we have the strong reserves that we've had. But I am anxious as to, as to where those accounts will stand once we really try to, try to get through the end of the year clearly. I, I, I don't have a fear that, that we won't have enough. But, but, but I am incredibly thankful that we've kept them as strong as we have for as many years as we have. That said, we've also made a commitment with our towns over the last few years to bring those revolving count, those revolving accounts closer to a line that says we've got reserves necessary to deal with situations, but not, but we are not far in excess of that. Because for our towns, they have sometimes looked at those accounts and they've said, you, you've got more money in your bank account than, you know, far more money than we do. There's something wrong with this picture of us supplying your funds annually, you saying that, that, that you're poor and that you need ours, but you building those coffers up. So we've had that dialogue over the last three or four years over, over what it means. I, I think that Over, over what it means. I, I think that. The budget that we're bringing forward this year. Where we're spending a little bit more than we're bringing in within each of those tuition revolving accounts, and we're spending our E and D down. Um, to a level that, that'll be at kind of seventy percent of, of its maximum allowable value. Um. That feels. Like the farthest that we should go in terms of spending those down, given what we know about potential FY twenty-five. Um, you know, if, if we can't find a way to keep costs. Um, contained, then we're, we're going to need a little bit more of a cushion to, to give ourselves a better shot and F, and FY twenty-five that, that doesn't cut deeper. Um, and by cut deeper, I'm talking about um years where you actually are saying. Rather than we're, we're nibbling around the edges, but everything is going to remain solid. We can, we can be. Very happy with our class sizes. We can be very happy with our programs of study. Um, but we need to, to get a little bit tighter, which is the way we feel this year. Um, if, i- if we need to cut significantly deeper, um, you know, those conversations are, are the really painful ones where, where we are talking about. Um, do we bring a much larger budget or do we lose? Um, lose something that, that is more central. So, um, that's. I perhaps use too many words, but um. It's a picture at least.
Thanks, Joe. I see Steve and then Carrie.
So Joe said, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so Joe said a lot of the things that I was going to say, so I will just, you know, quickly. Recap, uh, one of my concerns about spending. These accounts down more is that if we then wanted to. Continue to fund new positions that we would create this year with them. That would mean either continuing to accelerate the spending down of these accounts. We're asking for an even larger increase in future years. Uh, second, as we mentioned, Larry. We have decided to spend down the Williams gift. You're listening to the requests from the towns to. Help them with costs this year. But that does mean we do not have money in the bank as we were hoping to have. For issues when things happen in need. For peers and, you know, this was something that Joe was talking about and just worth remembering. And then the last is that we do have a lot of people in the towns who are living. On, you know, fixed incomes who are retired and whatnot. And you, these costs are cumulative. Anything we do is going to impact. I really liked what Julie had at the beginning of the discussion that, you know. I, I think what's productive now is these are painful conversations to have. But let's. Talk about how can we. You're using the excellent administration, the excellent teachers, path professionals, everyone in the district. How can we come together? And when the objectives, you know, within these numbers, I trust Joe and Jake. And the members of the towns, they have talked to, these are not numbers that have been come up quickly. These have been discussed, you know. Quite extensively. Where. The impact is absolutely known and felt. These are not the discussions any less wants to have. But, you know, it is our responsibility to come up with a budget. That will work with the town's needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Carrie?
Uh, yeah, so I'd like to move the budget um as presented and then we could continue the conversation. So I will move. Well, I'm, I'm going to move it with the.
With the actual numbers.
Yeah, so. The FY twenty-four operating budget of nine million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand uh fourteen dollars. And a capital budget of one million. Six hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Bill, I will second.
Okay, thank you. So further discussion. I do want to echo um what Steve said and. Um, what Julia brought up initially with her very first comment that. This is incredibly hard. Um, we had an incredibly hard conversation last year around um the DEIB. The position. Um, it's painful to lose that, and I don't think it's. It's painful for everyone sitting here. Um, but I do. Like the idea and think we need to explore more. Going forward, that idea of advocating for outcomes around. Um, around why we created that position in the first place. So I don't, I don't want to lose sight of that. Um, and I really appreciate. Sort of that. That way of thinking and really trying to, to make lemonade out of. Lemons. Um, because it's, you know, it's a, it's a tough, tough spot to be in. Um, so thank you for, for voicing that. Um, I really appreciate that. Curtis?
More nerdy math questions. Uh, Joe, uh, do you have the, what the ask would be of each town if it was current ask plus the, the DEIB position? Just for reference, and then the, what the, what it would be with the current ask plus a FTE art position in the middle school? Just one for each of those, since those are the most often brought up by the constituents that gave public comment today. Sorry to keep doing number talk, everybody. Um, happy Thursday. Go, go Celtics. Just throwing that out there. And I will, I will say that when I look at the trajectory of the increase from the level funded year up. To two percent for Lanesboro to two point six percent, uh, two point six eight percent to three percent, it's. While it is a. Increase, it, it definitely, I can see why people struggle with seeing how that's in line with the six or six point eight percent. Inflation increase for all other things in the, in the country right now, uh, and how that squares with a, a much smaller increase. Uh, in this ask, but I also see how big a percentage of the town budget. That ask is in terms of the size of the contribution. Uh, in comparison to all other town expenditures. Anyway, Joe, what do you got?
You, you had first asked about the director of DEMB. Um. That would increase Lanesboro from the three to three point six five. And it would increase Williamstown up to three point seven eight.
Thank you.
And then you, did, did you ask a follow-on of? Adding an additional teaching position on top of that, or?
Swapping in uh an FTE art or whatever the, the imagined solution was to middle school art. Uh, instruction instead of the DEIB. And the reason I'm asking while he's looking that up is just. To, if I want people to really see what it is if we just do this, or if we just do that and how it looks to the towns and. And uh the, hope to have this be an approved number uh and still satisfy all the goals of the district, Joe.
So. The, the swapping scenario that you just talked about, we'd be right around three point four eight for Lanesboro and three point six three for Williamstown.
Thank you.
And, and just because I, I'm sure people are probably wondering, depending upon where a position is. That impacts the, each of the two towns differently in that um. At Mount Greylock Regional School. Costs are shared in a certain, cost ends up, end up being shared in a certain way. At each elementary school, costs are borne directly by their local town. Um, and within the district office, it's pretty close to Mount Greylock Regional School. Um, but it's actually uh fully weighted by. The total Lanesboro and the total Williamstown. So if for some reason, um. Lanesboro had a massive elementary school. Relative to its Mount Greylock Regional School population, that could make a district office type position. Skew more in the direction of Lanesboro on a percentage basis. So that's. That's why the numbers, you need to take them and kind of split them up in funny ways.
Got it. Thank you.
Ursula?
Hey, everyone. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, want to make sure. So two things, I um. I appreciate hearing Curtis's question about the. Kind of incremental increases for those two positions. Um. I. Support Carrie's motion in. The budget, um. I just want to echo that this is hard and, and none of us kind of like where we are, but um I think we've struck a good balance of where we are and where we need to be. Um, I do think that hearing the. What I consider to be a relatively small incremental. Difference, I think I would support um the middle school. Our teacher addition. I don't know how anyone else feels about that. Um, but my thoughts on the DEIB position are that. Um, and someone please correct me if I think I'm wrong here. But it felt like in addition to the budget challenges, we didn't have. Necessarily a candidate that. We felt like, oh my goodness, we need to have this person on our staff right now. Um. The, you know, that this is just the person we, we have to get. So I feel like. With the combination of potentially not having the right applicants at this time and the budget challenges, it feels like the right thing to do to. Pause, you know, leave that position on pause. And next year, if we happen to have a candidate that was amazing, that we felt like we really needed to rearrange things and, and find the money in the budget, that would be a different story. Um. But I guess what I'm trying to say is I support keeping that position on hold because I didn't feel like that's where we were. Um, as far as having a, an applicant that we just really needed to move mountains for. Um, and I, I do think that for a position like that, having the right person is. Obviously very important. Um. So someone please tell me if I'm way off base with that, but, but that was my opinion on that one. Um, thank you.
Thanks, Ursula. Any other thoughts? We have a motion that has been moved and seconded. Julia?
Um. Just want to reiterate, I. Two things and then add a little context. I want to reiterate. The deep faith I have in Jake and Joe. I want to reiterate that. I believe our job. Is to set goals and around outcomes. Um, and some context is, um, I think some of you know I work with schools across the Commonwealth. And there are schools with a lot less, a lot fewer resources than us delivering the kinds of results that Mount Greylock delivers. Um, and it takes uh creativity and ingenuity and there are challenges and it's hard. Um, but let me go back to my first point that I have deep faith in Jake and Joe. Um, and if we are clear about our expectations and our goals. And then they can be clear. With the people who work with and for them. And that cascades down. I think we can do this as a district and there will be trade-offs. Um, and I think that's what I would ask Jake and Joe to come to us with, you know, we can. We can meet this goal, but this goal may have to suffer and, or. As I said last week, I think there are elements of our budget that we don't question that probably. Maybe need to be part of this discussion too, but they've been around for so long that we don't think about them. Um, but they are implicitly, we make decisions to fund things that maybe we shouldn't be funding. I don't know. I don't know what those would be. Um, but I, I really um. Have faith in Jake and Joe. Uh, and our, our collective wisdom on the school committee um to work through this and ensure that kids don't have. Um, kids do not uh lose services, even if the budget is, you know, in. You know, uh, with inflation a little bit smaller.
Thank you, Julia. Oh, Jose, sorry, your hand.
And I just, I, and I, I know Julia, I hope she know, I know Julia appreciates, or hopefully she knows how much I appreciate. Uh, all of her wisdom, experience and expertise and, and everything that she has to give. But I, I just wanted to follow up. On her point, and I agree, you know, one hundred percent that. You know, we, you know, that transitioning. The conversation towards outcomes is an appropriate and, and very much a, a likely, a much more effective way. To go about accomplishing all the things that we want to do as a district. But the, you know, the worry in some of the conversation that we've had is that it, it seems embedded in it is this. Assumption that. The budget that we have before us this year is inflated. That there are. You know, there's um numerous elements within the budget that can be curtailed without impacting. Our students. We have seen year on year an increase, I think a significant increase in demonstrated student need across our district. We've seen an increase in the number of students that our district services. We know all of us personally experienced what inflation has done to our ability to, you know. Run a household, let alone a school district. And we've also heard from Jake and Joe that they can't promise us, even with this. Four point six percent increase in the ask. In this, this upcoming fiscal year, they can't promise us. That student services won't be impacted, that are the most vulnerable of our student population. Will not be impacted. They just, they cannot do it. They cannot honestly do it. And I know even if we ask for twenty percent increase, I, I, we heard that as well, that they still, but. We also heard. That this retraction. Real retraction in the budget that um we're, we're moving, potentially moving forward for the next fiscal year. Is making. Accomplishing the mission of our district. We've heard that from Jake. Difficult. And I think that's important to acknowledge, and that's something that we all have to accept.
Well, thank you, Jose. Any further discussion? Curtis?
Uh, in, in the spirit of uh having the conversation being framed around outcomes, uh, I, I feel like. It, it's uh not necessary to, to say it, but I'm gonna, that the, the, the one outcome uh. That was one of the outcomes that has clearly been outlined as in uh, of being a priority to the community is arts instruction in the middle school and Joe had talked. Uh, or Jake, one or both of you, I don't know, it's somehow still Thursday. Um. Uh, about how to uh bring in more arts instruction into the middle school with current staffing by reshaping. Periods of usage for teachers that, that portion of the conversation uh. Is, i- is that something that is within the confines of this proposed budget, like in terms of? Whatever that looks like to you?
No, Curtis. That's not, we, we would really have to completely model that and put a cost to it. So, so those periods are not, although. I, I don't want to double speak, but. There, there are some moving pieces within that department that. Could impact. What we're able to do without even. Looking to other sources to work to fill in those, those small gaps, but, but the cost would be fractional of. An FTE.
Right. Um, and, and I assume the cover, the, the coverage in terms of time of direct instruction of art. To each of those grade levels would also be some amount fractional to an FTE uh as well. Um, but I. I'll, I take some small amount of comfort in knowing that there is the potential for that small step toward, toward what we all know is a. Tremendous priority of direct and consistent and frequent arts instruction for all grade levels because. Uh, the crucial part of that, it plays in the development of the human being. Um. I hope we can find a way to do that in these confines. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Any further thoughts, discussions, questions? Okay, we have a motion from Carrie that was seconded by Steve. Are you ready to call the vote? Okay, roll call alphabetically, please.
Bo and I.
Conry, I. I couldn't bear.
Constantine, no. Elephant spine, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Okay, that. Motion passes. I have six eyes and one no. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you for everyone who participated and. Has been reaching out to all of us and thank you Jake and Joe for all of your hard work. Budget season is never fun and it's exhausting and I appreciate all of you. Carrie and Julia for presenting last night to the Williamstown Finance Committee. Thank you. Yeah, Carrie.
So speaking of that, given that we have Lanesboro Finance Committee and Select Board next Monday. We were wondering if it would make sense for Lanesboro Town residents to. Help present the budget. So looking to, I mean Christina will be there, but looking to Curtis and Ursula just to see if either of you. Is available to attend that meeting on Monday evening.
I knew there was something I forgot to do today. I'm looking at a lacrosse schedule.
I can let you know, Carrie, I have to look at some baseball and softball schedules.
This this season.
Yep.
It's at six?
Six o'clock, yep.
Yeah, I can be there.
Okay, they have some, they have some beautiful slides already set up for you. They can familiarize you with those. Thanks, Curtis. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Julia, move. Carrie, seconds. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elephant, bind, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Milla, I.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. It is eight forty nine PM and we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Just say one quick comment.
Think we're already adjourned, Steve. Go ahead.
I I know, so. So I was hoping somebody could correct me because we had some questions from people in the audience that there's a difference between a public meeting and a meeting in public. And I thought that might just help explain. Why us. I'll talk to you later. Good night, all.
Go Celtics. What? Come on, people. My gosh.
Wasn't this the start of baseball season, Curtis?
I.
You're still talking basketball.